Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Glen County Board of Commissioners meeting, our first meeting in May. It's a large crowd tonight, and I'm sure you're here to hear the report on the Glen County General Fund financials, the nine months ending March 31st. We will move the item that you are interested in forward in the agenda to respect your time. Now, I'd invite you to stand and join me, invocation led by County Manager Hours, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Strickland.
Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for this day and the beauty of it. We thank you for the freedom we have to assemble here and to conduct the business of our community. I pray for wisdom for the Board of Commissioners tonight, that you would help them to understand each issue and help them make the decision that would be pleasing to you and beneficial for the Golden Islands. And Father, we thank you for our public safety officers, our first responders who put their lives on out front every day to protect our citizens and help meet their needs during the time that they need it most. And Father, we remember the families of those service members who died yesterday in Savannah in the C-130 crash. We just pray that you'd be with them during this time, and we do pray for protection and safety of all our military men and women who serve here in our nation and across the world protecting our freedom. We ask this in Christ's name, amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is public comment, and I think we have three. And Dr. Wright? If you would come to the podium, identify yourself and name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dr. Malcolm Wright. I've been a member of the St. Simon's Surf Sailors for the past thirty years. A very large number of county residents are in favor of having a beach sailing facility, and I think you would agree, therefore, that its design should encourage and promote the activity. I will remind you that the small number of people involved in the design eliminated the boatyard and the volleyball court completely in the first plan. County Manager Alan Hours sent out a memo regarding the master plan, which contains a number of flaws. They claim support from the Land Trust and the Department of Natural Resources, both of which were denied. The Boat Club and the Volleyball Club were also included, suggesting that we agreed with the plan. They claim to have increased parking spaces by 100, where actually the increase was 56. They also claim unrestricted boat and watercraft access, while the plan places the boatyard behind a large turnabout, which will frequently be filled with vehicles, including trolleys and buses dropping off and picking up people. Adjacent to the turnabout are changing and rinse-off stations, which will also be crowded. Emergency vehicles are expected to come to this area as well. The turnabout on the south side is completely unnecessary. At this time, there are very few problems with the turnabout on the north side, which could be enlarged considerably into the 150 linear feet space that we are voluntarily giving up on the waterfront. The new bathroom facilities are well-designed and attractive. The ladies' toilet gets crowded at times, but could easily be enlarged instead of demolished and rebuilt at the taxpayers' expense. I was dismayed by members of the Planning Commission putting a monetary value of $4.5 million on the Coast Guard parking and beach frontier. This property belongs to the taxpayers of Glen County and should be held by them forever. What group of officials would ever consider selling it? Therefore, the monetary value is redundant. This property is an invaluable community resource. This concept is typical of the way the committee has behaved. They began with a plan to have elevated viewing platforms along the eastern border, despite trees and shrubbery up to 25 feet tall. Did they think that the DNR would allow them to cut down the maritime forest? They still have picnic tables in the area, even though the temperatures in summer are 90 to 100 degrees. Their consultant measured surface areas in the parking lot at 115 degrees. They don't appear to have noticed the gnats and mosquitoes. They don't seem to realize that people come to the beach to come to the beach. The parking lot is almost empty six or seven months of the year, and local people would rarely picnic in a parking lot. The concept of the greater good is a convenient catchphrase to allow poorly studied changes to take place. Our boat park doesn't rob anyone of anything. There's a 10-foot-wide walking path on the south side and a wide entrance 50 yards to the north. What's wrong with that? There's a claim that their plan will improve the quality of life for all residents, which is a clear exaggeration of the facts. The committee seems determined to drive us off the waterfront, which raises the suspicion of an ulterior motive for the use of that area in the future, possibly by the undisclosed donors who are apparently willing to provide $3 to $5 million to pay for the entire project. What do they want in return? This is a very unpopular project in the county, as demonstrated by our petition, which gathered 1,500 verifiable votes against it in three days, and now stands at 2,590. We've been here for 45 years. We respectfully request to continue to have the same beachfront access that we now have. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Wright. Second speaker. Second speaker tonight is Michael Savino.
Good evening to everyone here. My name is Michael Savino. I am not a St. Simon's Surf Sailor member. I'm here as a local businessman, a family man, and someone who grew up here. I've seen a lot of changes along the way, some of them good, others I found perplexing. So I came here today to try to understand why there is one group trying to remove a public boating facility when I asked about why. It was because the land was too valuable to have a public boating facility there. Hmm, land too valuable. I've been told it's worth millions. Since when did public land meant for the public now become too valuable for the public? Well, let's build a nice revenue-generating park. That way, private investors can come in and fund it. It can be used for the public, but we can generate revenue and money from it. All we need is about $4 million, no problem. And then, lo and behold, private investors have appeared. They're ready to put up the money. And I don't know about you, but it sounds like a business that generates revenue. Say we build the park. Who's over it? The county? Commissioners? Or a private investor board? I don't know of any investor who donates money unless there is something in it for Is there a phase two for this land grab? I don't know. Who would be in charge? Private donor with a board over a public beach? I think this needs more answers to be made public before we go any further. So I ask this question: Are the planners in charge, or is the County Commission?
Thank you. Steve D'Amico.
Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Steve D'Amico, and I'm the Secretary for the St. Simon's Surf Sailors. I hope you have had the opportunity to read the letter we sent you a few days ago that outlines our efforts to work with the Coast Guard Beach Park Design Committee. As you probably now realize, those efforts have failed. They have failed because the Design Review Committee refused to implement our requested minimum requirements for the sailing facility. The design they have proposed in our last meeting with them does not meet our minimum requirements in size, space, and access, and this will ultimately make our facility and organization unsustainable. Their proposed plan states an increase from 35 slips to 40, yet our plan proposes a reduction from our existing 70 slips to 50. To be clear, they are not increasing the amount of slips as they imply. We are compromising and reducing the number of slips by about 30 percent. This minimum requirement of 50 slips, plus the windsurfers, kayaks, and paddleboard memberships, is the least we can afford to lose while still making the membership affordable for all who want to sail. Reducing our slip space will be a difficult task we have to take on, as we have full membership and a consistent waiting list of 10 to 15 people, some of whom are in this room right now. Their proposed plan reorganizes our space into an impractical and inefficient way by having a single lane of circulation within the space. Our plan incorporates a circulation route within the facility to make better use of how we function as sailors. We need this circular route to maintain paths of ingress and egress as boats and equipment are being maintained, cleaned, and repaired due to the harsh saltwater conditions in which they are used. Their plan proposes a single access point that would be impractical to use in both access to the facility and access to the beach. Our plan provides an access point from the parking lot for trailered boats and maintenance vehicles. This access to the sailing facility removes the need for trailered boat parking spaces in the parking lot, which in their plan will not work due to the tight confines of the parking plan itself. In conjunction with the circular route within the facility, this access point not only allows for more simplified access to the facility, but it is safer for the public by keeping the unloading and loading and rigging and unrigging area of the sailboats away from the southern beach access. In addition, similar to what Dr. Wright discussed, the practicality of accessing the beach in their plan is unrealistic due to the complex nature of their design and all the components they propose at the southern beach access. This project does not need to be as complex as they imply. By far and away, the biggest issues raised by the Glen County residents for this site, according to the survey from their workshops, is parking and increased bathhouse facilities. All of the other components that they have implemented in their plan are items they have added and make the design more complex. A park is a destination that people want to go to. The park is the beach. That is where everyone wants to go. It is served by the parking lot. It's that simple. Why create something most residents don't want and that we already have at various locations throughout the county, much less just a few hundred feet down the street? In conclusion, though our primary concern is the area of the sailing facility, our proposal for the overall master plan demonstrates there's more than one way to organize all of the components of the plan. We feel that the majority of the community is not in support of their plan because of its manufactured complexity and the financial burden to rebuild and maintain the park. The public has not had an opportunity to voice their opinion on this plan, and they should, and it's your duty to hear what the public wants to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The first item on the agenda will be commission presentations and announcements, and I have a proclamation, and then we'll move item number 28 after the proclamation is read. The proclamation tonight declaring May 6 through the 12th, 2018 Public Service Recognition Week in honor of millions of public employees at the federal, state, county, and city levels. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants, including teachers, doctors, and scientists, train conductors and astronauts, nurses and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and social workers, and countless other occupations, day in and day out, they provide these diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed, we, the Glen County Commissioners of Glen County, State of Georgia, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal heretofore that May 6 through the 12th is Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all level, federal, state, county, and city. In witness thereof, I set my hand this third day of May 2018. Bill Brunson, Chairman, Glen County Commissioners. Ms. Miller is going to come up and accept this for the county, but before I go down for the photo op, I do want to invite you all out to White Island Park this afternoon. We had a ceremony honoring our former clerk, Cindy Overstreet, by naming the lake Lake Cindy. It's a beautiful sign honoring her service of 19 years to Glen County. So. Consider adoption of the Coast Guard Beach Park Master Plan.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by introducing Scott McQuade and myself as co-chairs of the Master Plan Committee, and Hillary Stringfella is going to speak first.
Good evening. My name is Hillary Stringfella, and I'm the immediate past president of the Board of Directors of the Coastal Georgia Historical Society. During the term that I served as president of the society, the society, together with other organizations interested in the Coast Guard Beach Park, joined together with the support and good work of this commission to work for the betterment of the park. For the majority of the duration of this project, the Board of the Society, certainly myself, other organizations, have simply monitored the progress from afar. Recently, however, I've become more involved, as has the current president of the society, Louis Glenn, who's here tonight, in an effort to monitor the process of the work, not its progress, nor any specifics of any certain plan. Beginning with the work session of this commission on March 20th of this year, the society and other involved organizations have had serious concerns about the allegations being leveled and statements made in the public arena about our organization. Tonight, as this commission considers a plan for a publicly-owned tract of oceanfront property, there's information that it's important for you to know. Moreover, it's important for the general public, the taxpayers of this county, to have the full information on the future of the Coast Guard Beach Park. Specifically, boating and sailing are important parts of the beach experience. These activities should absolutely be a part of the master plan for the park. However, there's no individual or club that has any right to control access to boating and sailing, nor do such groups speak for the general boating and sailing public. Contrary to what's been represented, there is no current lease for the boatyard property. No individual nor any group has any contractual right to use county-owned oceanfront property. So tonight, as you consider the Coast Guard Beach Park, I would encourage you to consider the needs of boating and sailing generally. The details of who or what group operates boating and sailing amenities contained within this park and on what terms that operation occurs is a conversation for another day, a conversation I'm glad is Mr. Mumford's. A second point that's important for you to know is that the Master Plan Committee has a broad cross-section of members and represents as diverse a group of interested parties as it was possible to assemble. There are groups who did not participate on this committee. Some of these groups have shared information with you, the Board of Commissioners, and with the general public that is simply less than accurate, like stating that there are anonymous donors who will fund a $4 million park. And an email sent to you on Monday of this week, again, contained less than the full truth. The same report was then provided to the Brunswick News, which shockingly shared half-truths and alarming statements with the general public by way of our county's legal organ. Misleading decision-makers, whether it's this Board or the general public who owns this property, benefits no one. I appreciate that the decisions made by this Board are difficult and that you've got to balance the interests of many, finite resources, fiscal responsibility, and the greater public good. To do so, you need factually correct and complete information. It has frequently been stated, I just heard it again tonight, that a petition exists with over 2,500 signatures to "save" the boatyard. Only recently have I seen this petition. A picture of the actual petition that folks have signed is on our screen. As you consider decisions this evening, it's important to know what folks have actually said. More than 2,500 people have signed a petition to save a portion of the public beachfront from commercial development. Let's look at that. Help save... The petition requests signers to help save iconic property from "commercial development." By definition, "commercial development" is office buildings, industrial property, medical centers, hotels, retail stores, multifamily housing, warehouses. No part of the master plan today or at any time has ever included "commercial development." Thank you for your time throughout this process, this 13-month process, in considering the future of the Coast Guard Beach Park. Interestingly, the entirety of this property, not just the beach, has been designated as a park under the Glen County zoning definitions for some time. And it's exciting to think of a park, the future of it, which is enjoyable and beneficial for all its users, and a resource that's the pride of our county. And it is with pride that I'd ask Sherri Jones and Scott McQuade to share with all of us the specifics of the master plan for the Coast Guard Beach Park.
Before they begin, let me make a statement that I should have made before the first speaker there. This is not a public hearing item, and I realize that there are passionate people on both sides, good people on both sides, friends of mine on both sides of this issue. But tonight, and I thank you for it so far, this is going to be conducted with civility and decorum, and we'll not tolerate outbursts and that sort of thing. So the applause is fine. We've accepted that for a long time here at Glen County Commission, but we're going to keep this civil. So I'm sorry to throw you off your game there, but I did want to make that statement. Thank you.
Anytime, and thank you. And thank you, Commissioners, for your time this evening. As you probably know, my name is Scott McQuade. I am the co-chairman of the Planning Committee and serve in various different roles within the community. I wanted to spend my time this evening just kind of going through the process to date to show you where we are and the progress we've made, and then we'll get into the plans specifically. As you remember, the improvement process was started in 2017, and that was actually last summer, 10 months ago, when we started to review the final RFPs coming in and we began this journey. But as you may recall also, this journey began long before this. There have been several past iterations of trying to improve this area for well over a decade. But once again, we started on this process again. And really, what started this process was the creation of a public-private partnership, and it included first and foremost Glen County, the Historical Society, and the CVB. And I'll explain how it grew from there. In this process, we conducted several public workshops. As you can see up on the screen, we had three public workshops on St. Simon's Island, and we also had one at the College of Coastal Georgia in Brunswick. So we had four public workshops, and then we actually had these two public meetings here with you all. We had a work session, as you recall, and we're here before you once again, so for a total of six times. In this process, we have surveyed both people online and also surveyed people that attended the meetings. And you heard some of those results. They really did vary. And we'll talk a little bit about what was pushing the plan in the various directions based on some of those results. In addition to that, you had thousands of volunteer hours provided from dozens of organizations and individuals. And through that whole process, we are here tonight to present you a final concept. Our goal was to create a new community conversation, and I'll talk about how many we tried to include in the various people that were included in the project. But undoubtedly, what you can tell here tonight is that people have put their hearts and their souls and their minds and efforts into this area. It is very dear to everyone in the community. Participation has been broad, and we have learned a lot through the process. I certainly learned one thing in particular: Everyone can agree on something, but not everyone can agree on everything. And certainly, that is one of the themes that we ran into throughout the process. But what we tried to do is not stop from moving forward and try to continue to build consensus and bring the process forward and focus on the things that band us together as a community. No process is perfect, no plan is perfect, and no person is perfect. But I hope we, as a community, can focus on the place we all love, that have caused thousands to participate in this process, and find a final point in which we can move forward as a community. Of course, through this process, we also adopted best practices, as we'll share in our plan, and Keys will be happy to answer questions on those later in the presentation. But we also discussed and explored funding solutions. We've heard some suggestions about those funding solutions this evening. We've also heard about them through a variety of different methods, and most of which have been discussed are false. Many Commissioners know who have served on the CVB Board or are involved in the tourism industry understand that there are tourism funding mechanisms that allow for infrastructure improvement. In fact... In fact, many county Commissioners have recommended that we deploy those funding mechanisms. When we went on this journey back in 2013 and 14, over the last master plan process, it was discussed using tourism improvement dollars for the project. Communities across our country are using these dollars to enhance and improve the very assets that residents and visitors enjoy and share in common, but they also do this without taxation of their residents. The only improvements that you see proposed at this place are the ones that you see before you on their plan. Despite their beaten discussion about hotels and condos being built by the CBB or some other anonymous donor, these are simply misinformation. Try to move that forward. There we go. Talk a little bit more about the process. As I'm sure you have, the people that have been involved in this committee have talked to hundreds and thousands of people. They include the general public, they include the various people within the government positions that either work in the various facilities or manage them. Of course, there was the Master Plan Committee itself, and other organizations participated throughout. In all, hundreds of people participated in many different processes during this time. And the one thing that I found to be true is there are many more things that we agree upon than disagree. But too often, we focus on the things that divide us. And I'm afraid if we focus on our division, that we will not move forward as a community. And we will have yet another plan that sits on the shelf to join the literally dozens of others that have never been implemented. If we want to move forward as a community, we have to focus on the things we agree upon. And we have to move our community forward. When we looked at the project considerations, we were as broad in our considerations as we were of the people we tried to get involved in the project. And Keys, who is with us tonight, our consultant, warned us from the very beginning, a master plan is hard, and you've heard someone suggest that it's too complex to attempt because there are so many moving parts. And indeed, it is complex, there's no doubt, a master plan is complex. But Keys, in his wisdom, also reminded us that if we focus on one issue, we will throw the whole process out of alignment. In my hundreds of discussions with this expert planner, he reminded me that a master plan is about balance, and his job was to balance all the needs and goals of the community, but not focus on one single goal. Thank you for your hard work, Keys and your team. So, tonight, we have the opportunity to continue to steward a valuable resource. This is one of our only two pre-public beach accesses in the state of Georgia. It is our primary beach access for Glen County, and we look at the best uses of this county property to enhance the quality of life for everyone, and that has many different definitions to individuals and different groups. As I've said all along, this process, I believe, will be a turning point for Glen County. Tonight, we'll either move forward, stay in neutral, or perhaps even go backwards. But tonight, on behalf of the committee, I would recommend that the commission move Glen County forward. Thank you for your time.
My name is Sherri Jones, and I became involved in this project due to the society's major investment in a new World War II home front museum at the Coast Guard Station. So, tonight, I'm going to pick up where we left off at the work session on March 20th. At that meeting, we had some specific instructions from you, the commission, regarding this plan. You asked us... You asked us to consider shifting the new beach access point slightly northward to create more space for the boatyard. You asked us to provide 35 boat storage slips. You asked us to meet with the St. Simon Surf Sailors. And finally, you asked us to bring the best plan to the commission tonight. We followed your directions, and now we would like to report on our activities. The meeting with the St. Simon Surf Sailors took place on April 12th. Our goal was to listen and to accommodate the specific needs of the sailors while preserving the integrity of the plan. Keys, the planner, attended that meeting, and he took detailed notes. The Surf Sailors requested 40 boat slips for their club and 10 slips for rentals. They requested a 10-by-20 storage building. And they agreed that storage buildings for police and lifeguards were not a priority to be within their area. After the meeting, Keys took the detailed notes and produced a revised plan based on that feedback. We called a meeting of the Master Plan Committee and met on April 23rd to review input from the Surf Sailors and to consider Keys' new design. The meeting resulted in approval of a new design. Actually, overnight, Keys had further ideas about how to accommodate the needs of the sailors. And he called the next morning, very excited. He thought, "I think I can draw a plan that will win their support." So, he sent the plan, and Scott and I reviewed it and forwarded it to the Master Plan Committee. On April 25th, the Master Plan Committee via email approved the second version. We had committed at the meeting on April 12th to provide the plan to the Surf Sailors by April 25th. So, that afternoon, once the plan had been approved by the committee, I called the Surf Sailors and offered to hand-deliver and talk through the new design that afternoon. That offer was declined. I therefore emailed the plan at 4:51 PM on April 25th. Our project manager made a second attempt, being a design professional, he thought he would have a try, and contacted the Surf Sailors again regarding the new design and expressing our excitement about the possibility of them being able to support this version of the plan. That offer was also declined. This is the latest plan that was approved by the Master Plan Committee, and you have a copy in your packet as well. I will point just a few things out to you. So, based on your instructions at the work session and our meeting with the Surf Sailors, we amended the plan in these ways. We were asked to consider shifting the traffic circle north, the new second traffic circle, which is down here, shifting it north to create more space for boat storage. We were also asked by the commission to provide 35 boat slips, and the area, the new area here, actually accommodates 42 spaces. The Surf Sailors themselves asked for 40. The southern building here is in response to the Surf Sailors' request for a 10-by-20 storage facility. And then the other building here is a rental facility. We've also, at 14, if you just, the storage is here, there's a path here, running just like that. This is a 10-foot-wide dedicated path to facilitate moving sailboats from the boat storage area here to the beach here. The plan still accommodates a public launch of boats and boards and public drop-off, and it also provides boat trailer parking at number nine, which is up here. The lifeguard and police storage, which has been relocated, is now at 26, which is a better location. Is it, I'm having a little bit of a time, is that 26 there? Is located there. Now, one of the most important features of the master plan, let me just go back a second. So, this is the plan that the Master Plan Committee was very excited about presenting to the sailors. And I think you can see for lots of reasons that their request was for it to be here, but this traffic circle is critical to the functionality of the park, and I just wanted to share with you why. The traffic circle provides direct access for police and lifeguards to their headquarters, that was the number 26 I pointed out, and to their storage facility, which is in the same location. The second traffic circle provides direct route for emergency vehicles with appropriate turn radius direct to the lifeguard station. The second circle distributes vehicular and pedestrian traffic to two locations, reducing congestion and improving the experience for beachgoers. It also provides an appropriately-sized location for shuttle and/or bus drop-off to reduce overflow into the adjacent neighborhoods. It also provides an appropriately-sized drop-off for beachgoers, including sailors, who are there bringing their own boat to the beach for the day. A master plan is defined as a long-range plan that balances and harmonizes all elements. With forty-some considerations on this site, a lot of discussion and thought has gone into this process. We've been grateful for the expertise and commitment of WLA Studio and the team that he's assembled, and their disciplined approach to this complex process. They used a three-step process, beginning with detailed site investigations, to understand the current conditions on the site, what was working and what wasn't working. For instance, they learned that our sandy parking lot was actually a concrete pad between six and 12 inches deep that was totally impermeable. The next step was to build a vision by reaching out to the community to learn what they wanted for this project. And finally, they began developing concepts. And some of the most valuable work was research on best practices from other coastal communities. That's where they were able to identify innovative and effective solutions that will work here in our community. Now, I want to take you through some of the benefits that this project will have the residents of Glen County. Comprehensive planning has allowed us to use the land more efficiently. For instance, we've been able to increase the area available for public enjoyment, all the public, to almost one and a half acres, which is four times the current space that they have. Greater efficiency has also allowed us to add 100 more parking spaces in roughly the same area that we're using today. And as I mentioned, two public beach access points will greatly improve traffic flow on busy days. Cranston Engineering, part of the project team, has produced a detailed parking plan for this area with ideas that will address transportation issues not only on this site but outside and around the rest of the community. As you can see here, the plan provides onsite solutions, like more parking spaces, improved management, and encouraging alternative forms of transportation, but it also investigates This plan will make it much easier for beachgoers to find a convenient space to park, as well as protecting the surrounding neighborhoods from overflow parking. Currently, most stormwater in this area is running straight off this site into the marsh. The new plan will protect surrounding neighborhoods from flooding, as well as using bioswells to filter the water before it enters the marsh. As part of his research, Keys asked many park managers, "What would you change about your parks?" And they all prioritized shade. We plan to add shade trees throughout the site to improve the beachgoers' experience by reducing surface temperatures, and to beautify the area. Our vision is to create a beautiful, functional park for Glen County. From a safety standpoint, the facilities provided will allow Glen County police, emergency services, and lifeguards direct access to the things they need to serve the community. Pedestrian and bike safety in the park will be drastically improved with wide, clearly-designated paths. A lot of thought and research has gone into services for beachgoers. We all know how important clean bathrooms are and a short waiting time. Park managers agreed that oversizing bathrooms so that they can be cleaned during peak times and adding changing and rinsing stations significantly improve everyone's experience. This is a plan befitting this vital gateway and community gathering place. This concept validates the community's shared vision statement and the county's strategic plan. So, on behalf of people all across Glen County who've contributed to this process, completed surveys, attended public meetings, called and emailed, and served on the committee, we request your vote to make this plan a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, I have asked the Surf Sailors to designate one individual if the Commissioners have questions for the Surf Sailors, and I think, Mr. Usri, you are that designee. So, thank you. All right, any questions for the presenting team by the commission?
Yeah, I have a couple. I think I covered everything, but I want to make sure, just for my own edification. I don't know about public hearings on this issue, but I've been hearing from the public for the last three straight weeks on nothing but this issue, so I'm going to give all the questions I got answered. Drainage, you taking care of the drainage situations every time thinks about raining, it doesn't flood, correct? Parking surfaces is going to be permeable, correct?
Would one of you come, Keys, would you come to the microphone so we can get all this on the record, please? Thank you very much, and identify yourself.
My name is Keys Williamson, and I'm the consultant for the plan and the answer to the first two questions have been correct.
Okay. Parking spaces, I'm not sure how anybody knows how many we have, because there's nothing marked over there, but you're going to delineate all the parking spaces so people won't leave four foot on either side when they park?
Correct.
Thank you. And this is almost to everybody on the BOC. Any plans that I don't know about, maybe backroomed, to turn this over to the Historical Society when they're done with this? Anybody know of anything?
No, sir.
Okay. If there's any plans to turn this entire property over to Historical Society? Any plans to turn it over to any private corporations or even the CBB that anybody's aware of?
No, sir.
Yep, out. Okay, that was gone. Okay, I've heard that the Surf Sailors had no input. The first plan, am I correct, had no provision for the Surf Sailors?
That's incorrect. We presented four concepts to the Design Review Group, three of which that had boatyards. We refined those into two plans that were presented at the January public meeting. One had a boatyard, one did not have a boatyard.
Okay, let me make this simple. So, when you started out, you had less space for the Surf Sailors than you do now, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, so apparently they did have some input. We have two beach accesses, I saw that. We have two beach accesses, I saw that in the plan. I asked that you could go all the way around the parking lot, 360 degrees, because there were some barriers there. Those are gone, I assume? Those lines I saw there are just a walkway?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. All right. You are aware that your plan will eliminate the surf sailors' private beach club access area, which is now currently fenced in? They will not have a big acre and a half or two acres fenced in area, correct?
They won't have exactly what they have now, that is correct.
Correct, okay. General public with boats, will have access to the beach area and the parking and the beach area to take their boats out?
That is correct.
What they do not have now?
Well, I think that someone that came with the boat could figure out a way to get it across the north access point, but the basic answer to your question is yes. Private individual will have public access with a boat to the beach.
Okay, all right. And, okay, general public access for that whole area, police and fire department accommodated. And one more question. Commissioner Murphy, is your wife a member of the Historical Society Board?
My wife is not a member of the Historical Society Board, no.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have, gentlemen.
Are you sure?
I'm pretty sure. Now, she and I have tried to be good philanthropic citizens of Glen County, and we have made a donation on behalf of both of us to become what's called lighthouse members, where the starting donation to be a lighthouse member is $1,000. I've done the same thing for the Land Trust. I've contributed to Golden Owls Youth Orchestra, Golden Owls Live. I'd have to look at my tax return, but we try to be generous to our church at even higher levels, so we contribute to a lot. But I think what my wife does and what she participates in is completely irrelevant.
I don't disagree.
Thank you.
All right. Spirit of total transparency, Commissioner Coleman.
Yes, I have a few questions myself. And yes, Scott, I agree with you, there's a lot of moving parts here, a lot more so than I would have ever dreamed that we would ever have when this thing first started. However, I will say this, just my own personal belief, this overkill. I'm not saying we don't need some improvements to the parking lot. And I'm just saying, this is not a park, and it never has been a park. So, why do we want to do this? Is it, we already have overdevelopment. We sit and talk, day in and day out, month after month, about how we're going to control the overdevelopment, and to the point where, I like to use the example, you can only get so many pickles in a jar, and when the jar gets full, then what are you going to do? Okay, you're going to have to start getting rid of some pickles. Well, this is what's going to happen one day to St. Simon's Island, and you're just going to keep on and keep on and keep on. Now, we already have overdevelopment, we have overcrowding, we have terrible traffic problem, we have issues with infrastructure. One of the few natural areas, this is one of the few natural areas that is still on the beach on St. Simon's Island. Why do we want more parking? So, we can have more of the same with what I just mentioned? More parking, more cars, more people. This is a parking lot for the beachgoers. It's not a park, it was never intended to be a park, and we're totally redeveloping this particular piece of ground to be something that was never intended to be. The St. Simon's Surf Sailors have leased the sailboat area for years with no problems. This is the exact same arrangement that the county has with the St. Simon's Marina. This was brought up, as you well know, by Commissioner Murphy here when he first came on board. St. Simon's Boating and Fishing Club, they've had a lease contract just almost identical to what the sailors have had all these years. And they do the same thing. It's county property, they've got an agreement to maintain it, and it's open to anybody that wants to come in there and come and go out of it. It's self-supported, and, as I said, it's open to anyone who wants to become a member. Yes, there's a waiting list, so what does that tell you? Pretty popular thing. This governing board sitting here tonight, we have a certain level of public trust to maintain. This property belongs to the taxpayers of this county, and all efforts for public input should be totally exhausted before a major change is made to the area that all of the taxpayers and visitors enjoy. I personally would like to make a motion that this item be deferred until such time that we have had formal, and I want to emphasize, formal town hall meetings conducted so everyone, not just this group, but everyone is going to be affected by this. The whole county taxpayer group will have an opportunity for input on this major change to a very popular beach area on St. Simon's Island. Thank you.
All right, you have a... Commissioner, you're making a motion for deferral?
Yes, sir.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second. All right. Anyone else have any cut?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I did miss one. Thank you for reminding me. Who's paying for all this? I know Glen County, we voted to give them a $10,000 token payment, but is Glen County paying for all this improvement? The taxpayers? The taxpayers? Glen County?
Are you speaking about the plan itself, or the...
The improvements to be made to the parking area at the Coast Guard Station. Has the county committed to pay for this?
No. I think our next steps would be, is really doing the feasibility to understand the costs of what these improvements would be, and then also determining the funding sources that are available. As I mentioned before, and part of that process is exploring the tourism funding as a potential funding source, as I'm sure you're well aware of is available.
Okay, and you'll bring that back to us at a later date, once you identify which way you want to go. Okay, thank you.
You're basically asking us to allow you to move forward with this plan so that you can really begin the heavy lifting? Is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, basically, the next steps is really to explore the full feasibility of the project, and I'd be happy to let Keys speak, but we have been in really a conceptual phase since we started, and if we don't move out of conception, we can't really study the feasibility, the costs, and whatnot. It doesn't mean that you're agreeing to put this plan in the ground, or you're agreeing to pay for it, or anything of that nature. What you're basically telling us to do is that we can move forward with this concept for further exploration. Is that correct, Keys?
Dr. Murphy, you look at the key...
Yeah, I have a couple comments and questions. So, Dr. Wright suggested that this area, which, as I recall, Scott and/or Sherry, is a little over an acre. He called it an invaluable community resource. And then Mr. Savino suggested it was public land meant for the public. Can you speak to the question I have? If that is really, and I agree wholeheartedly with them about that point, how many members, until this current dust-up occurred, how many people were actually members of the club, as they call it?
I did some research from the surf sailors' website, and my best estimate is about 120 people.
That's in a county of 85,000 people?
Yes, sir.
So, you probably are aware, there was an interesting letter to the editor this morning, and I'm going to read briefly from it, written by Mr. McDonald, who I do not know. He pulled up, he's a sailor and a resident of Brunswick for over 15 years. He pulled up to the gate in the past and was told, "Sorry, I can't let you in." And I asked how I became a member. He said, "Membership was full, and despite many slips being opened, many boats stored there were in disrepair." He asked for the club's phone number, was told not to bother because there was a waiting list. Mr. McDonald went on to say, "I'd heard similar stories." So have I heard similar stories. And, I mean, going back to the spirit of an invaluable community resource and public land for public use, this is probably more a rhetorical question, but does your plan make for use of more than 125 people?
Yes, sir. I also did some research on the tax status of the surf sailors' club, and it's a 501(c)(7), which is a social and recreational club, which is inherently an exclusive membership organization. That is the way that they're set up. So, that, to me, is in conflict with wide access by the general public. And so, one of the reasons we've been able to quadruple the amount of space for the general public to enjoy that area is by just not eliminating the boatyard, but just shifting it.
Right.
And we felt that was a very strong compromise.
And furthermore, of late, once this current dust-up really got heated, somebody sent me a screenshot of a Facebook post suggesting they were selling $50 social memberships to get inside the fence. I've got to tell you, I was just shocked that public land was being sold to $50 for people to get inside a gate, to sit on land that we, the public of Glen County, own, but I digress. Let me go to the next clarification. So, I think there is some misunderstanding because of the way an article was written, and maybe an editorial was written in the Brunswick News, and this meant no disrespect to Taylor Cooper, I think does a fine job of presenting the facts, but the misunderstanding might have come from the money that was raised to fund the Historical Society World War II Museum, and conflating that with money that would be used to develop the Coast Guard Plan. Could you speak to that briefly?
Well, I can't. Actually, Taylor Cooper, we had, the society released an announcement that we completed the campaign on Wednesday, I guess that was April 25th, and it just happened to get picked up by Taylor Cooper on the Friday, and he combined it with the master plan. But I shared the press release with the commissioners, and it contained no information about the plan at all. It was solely focused on the fact that we've completed the campaign. As far as the money, Taylor Cooper called me and asked me the specific question, "Is any of the money that you've raised, the $3.6 million for the new museum, is any of that going towards the beach park?" And I made it very clear that all that money was restricted for use in a separate bank account for the sole purpose of funding the new museum.
So, to speak to Mr. Savino's point made earlier in the evening about private investors being involved, that is not the case?
I've never heard of that before.
Okay, and other chatter has occurred that a hotel or a couple of hotels would be built for wedding venues, and maybe even a Historical Society t-shirt shop was anticipated. Could you speak to that?
Well, I can. The Historical Society has a license agreement with Glen County on the Coast Guard Station building, which defines the boundaries of the site as to be the area specifically around the Coast Guard building. The license also has a section called uses, and we are restricted to only using the space for either historical or educational purposes. We are restricted by that license from doing anything else. So, I just, in terms of, you know, the area that we have control over, it is the immediate area around the Coast Guard Station, and even that's restricted for, we couldn't build a hotel there either.
Right. Okay, thank you. And I guess the last point that's been made abundantly clear, but I just wanted to reiterate about the public not having an opportunity to voice their opinion. I think we've had multiple public comment sessions, I've had multiple...
I personally advertised them. We bought a flight plan in the Brunswick News for each of those, so there were three ads for each public meeting, to make sure that people, and we held one in Brunswick because we really wanted wide community attendance. And it was also posted on the website, and we had some articles, too.
Right, yeah, and I think that's a point that, again, I tried to make it with my 85,000 people in Glen County. This is a resource for all of Glen County. This is not a resource just limited to a small number of people in Glen County.
It's the primary beach access for our county, and it needs to serve our county well, and...
You know, unfortunately, and I agree with that, but the final point I would make here is that I think I've heard over and over from actually a man whose opinion I respect, but has said several times here, basically, if you don't do what I'm saying, you're not listening. And I tried to suggest to him, "No, we listen, we may disagree." And that's, I guess, the way I look at this call for more and more and more public meetings. We'll never get anything done. We've had, in my opinion, we've had a superabundance of public meetings. There's been an incredible amount of chatter, emails, phone calls, and social media posts about this. So, I believe everybody's had the opportunity to air their opinion. And my last comment is, I've attended several of the meetings, and I've just been terribly impressed with the inclusive work that Keys Williamson has attempted to do in this difficult environment here. I know I'm not alone, but I'm very appreciative of his hard work and the openness with which he's done it. Thank you, Sherry.
Any other commissioner have a question?
Yes, and I don't know, Sherry, you or Scott can answer this. On the boatyard, how's that going to be set up? How are you proposing? Is that just for the sailors in this club? Is that open to any sailors?
Our plan includes sailing facilities, and we have included, following the commissioner's instructions, 42 spaces for boat storage. There's also a boat rental center, which could also be used for beach rentals, chairs and things. Plus, it accommodates people who just want to drop off their boat for the day, and then they could park their rig in the park. So, we have not designed these facilities for a specific club or a specific commercial entity. We've just tried to provide facilities so that people can sail here easily and comfortably and free of charge.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you. Any other questions? Are there any questions for the representative of the surf sailors?
No. Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we adopt the Coast Guard Beach Park Master Plan as presented this evening.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the Coast Guard Plan as presented tonight signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Six to one, pass. Good luck to you. You all are welcome to stay for the presentation on the nine-month budget. It is just so exciting, you can't believe it. All right. All right. Item number two. Receive the FY '18 year-to-date financial report from Ms. Miller, also an expert on tide tables.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, commissioners. It was close. So I'm going to present the March 31st financial statements for the county, the financial position of the county. As you can see in the general fund, you can see our approved budget, our revised budget, and then our year-to-date actual revenues and expenditures. The revenues that we normally present to you as we're looking at how the economy is doing and we kind of gauge how our budget is doing. Local option sales tax is 1.73% under where we should be year-to-date budget, but that is understandable as the, we had a hurricane in our fall months and then we have our, wait, yes, and then we have our spring and summer months coming up, so that is not of concern at all. TAVT is running quite a bit ahead of budget. That equates to maybe $350,000, $400,000 ahead of budget. Community development revenue, we've seen that slow down just a bit. It's still 5% over year-to-date budget. And then our ambulance fees, as you're aware, we've outsourced our billing services and they have started to really bring in some revenue. But there's a potential that we'll be short of our budget. This year's budget's $2.5 million. So potential of being short about $500,000. And then in our property taxes, we have a potential of being about $750,000 short. And that was due to an error in calculation on my part of the amount of property tax revenues. Instead of 97%, I budgeted 100%. I just thought everyone would pay their taxes. But with that, we are still projecting year-end numbers. We're still projecting to finish in the black, just as we should, with some departments that have done a great job. We've had some savings in capital projects and then we've had some positions that have not been filled for the year. Sure.
Ambulance fees.
Yes, sir.
Pardon me. Ambulance fees, that's running about $10,000 a week. Any clue as to, are we having less wrecks and healthier people and less accidents or what?
I think we have had issues. Chief or Neil Mann are welcome to come and help me. Would you like to address that?
I can address one, one I know of it.
Okay.
One of the issues with McKesson, our billing company, we had an extended process getting them onboarded. They had made some changes that legal had to review. What happened in this process is the entire process threw us late getting started, therefore several, and I can't give you the number, I don't have the figures yet. Any bill in excess of six months old, the insurance companies won't pay. It wasn't filed in time and a manner. We had filed with private, with in-house billing up until February of last year. McKesson took over anything in March, they took over that in November. So they were right at the six-month period at the time. In addition to the delay in getting McKesson going, we had a delay in getting our automated billing system going. It didn't come up and get online completely until April 1st. And this all keys back into the original contract negotiations. So we may have been estimated a little high on the income. Speaking with them, they're giving us some ideas that we will be at a certain point. They were saying $2 million to $2.1 million. However, one consideration that I personally did not undertake is that of the $2 million, we owed 8.1, 8.10% back to them. It was my impression that they were taking the money out and sending us the money after their fees. So that did make it, that's something we had to accommodate in this year's budget as well.
Is there any chance of recovering those insurance claims?
After six months? No. What we do then is do a, we do a self-bill to them. Now, the person, the people, can contact their insurance company and oftentimes they'll hold they pay. But once we don't hit it within the six-month period, they refuse us, we then bill the patient. The patient then contacts their insurance company and it's usually recovered.
Chief, that's not the case with Medicare, is it?
Medicare, I-
We have a lot of old people in this community, so, including myself, so, you know, I thought Medicare, you had up to one year to file the insurance claims against.
I can't answer the exact on Medicare. Medicare is very good about paying. They always pay within 15 days. I have not heard any issues with the Medicare billing. It's generally the private insurers. In addition, as part of our transition process, McKesson renewed our Medicare license contract with a new company. They failed to renew our Medicaid contract. We were notified the 1st of April that our Medicaid, we could no longer bill Medicaid. So we've refiled our Medicaid claims. So it's been, it's been a rugged turnaround, but the issues, we believe, are probably 90% corrected now.
Chief, I'm going to veer off of what we're here for right now. I was going through the Convention and Trade Center in Savannah Monday, Monday morning, very early. I was up there taking a class and I'm walking through and I look over and who do I see? A doggone fire chief sitting over there. And I'm like, "What are you doing here?" Well, ACCG gives the classes and they give classes to, we have commissioners from all 159 counties go and take classes on various subjects. And what was the class you was about? Public safety or?
Yes, sir. It's public safety, EMS and the fire service.
Well, he was up there to give a class on just what he said and I was surprised to see our fire chief up there, but I tell you what, I was, I felt like Glenn County was honored that, should be honored that our fire chief, out of all the fire chiefs in the state of Georgia, would be up there giving that class because they, they're serious about having top-notch people give those classes to the commissioners from around the state of Georgia. And I was pleasantly surprised, but I was, as a commissioner from Glenn County, I was kind of honored to see that our first-rate chief was up there teaching folks from around the state of Georgia about EMS and public safety. So thank you for going up and being a part of that.
I appreciate that, sir. This was actually my second appearance. I was voluntold two years ago by Mr. Oars. He actually got me involved in this and it has been a phenomenal experience. I've learned as much up there as I imparted knowledge.
Chief, do you know how much uninsured folk that we run across with the ambulance service? I know years ago, there was a problem we were trying to work on.
To give you those numbers, I would have to ask Chief Mann. I want to say it's in the 30% range. Medicare makes up 30 to 40%. Private insurers, 30 to 40%. And self-payers or the uninsured make up 30 to 40%. But to give you an exact number, I would have to ask Chief Mann.
And would you say a lot of those are what we call chronic flowers? People know that they can get to the back quicker if they call the ambulance?
Unfortunately, yes. The emergency department seems to be the primary care physician for a large percentage of the population. They call an ambulance thinking that they will go straight to the ER. However, the hospitals now started moving them into the triage area and they're waiting the same. Now, they do take our emergencies immediately, but the ones that call, and we get a lot of unique calls, toothaches, headaches, probably not a true medical emergency, but we are there to serve.
Have we looked at, because I know we, and I can't remember if it was you, Mr. Oars, that attended. We brought in Grady Hospital at a program where they worked with 911 services to kind of weed out some of that and to send out, they actually have a provider, a doctor or a PA that goes out to deal with some of this stuff, to reduce the cost of ambulance services.
The community paramedic, which is becoming a move in a lot of the metropolitan areas throughout the, or, excuse me, a lot of the urban areas throughout the nation, is a great program and however requires a partnership with a licensed medical facility. There are fire departments that do it, but they have licensed with, or they have hired people above the level of paramedic. They call it a community paramedic program, it's usually a nurse practitioner, a physician's assistant that goes out. And this is being brought forth, it was being brought forth by the hospitals due to the fact of the Medicare penalties. The hospitals pay if the patient's readmitted within 30 days. So it started off as more of a follow-up and it's evolving. It is something, is a potential, but I don't see it in the near future whether I was called. I believe it'd be beneficial. I don't believe we have the partnerships nor the paramedics just yet to fully go into this program.
Well, right, I agree. I think the hospital needs to take probably the lead in working with us on this. And, but we'll see. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions regarding?
Yeah, I just have a quick one, not for Chief, but for Tanya. Chief, that was great. I don't need to hear anything more about non-payment of medical bills. I went through that for a lot of years and ended up retiring and becoming a commissioner so I could make some money finally, you know? It was that bad. Just kidding. So Ty, please tell me about other financing sources where we've got 9% to date with a remaining balance of $14,426,000. And what happens to your balanced budget projections? Should we not see that money?
So that is where, within other financing sources, is use of fund balance. So this would mostly be Hurricane Irma.
Right.
So all of that, we say we're using fund balance, but we never actually move it in. It just all rolls in at year end.
Right.
So that's why that shows such a huge discrepancy.
So we will have that money to roll in at year end?
We will use the money in fund balance at year end.
Right. Right. Okay. What does that mean about our reimbursement so far for Matthew and/or Irma?
So we've been almost entirely reimbursed for Matthew. We've got one or two payments left. And then for Irma, those have not started coming in yet. So as those come in, that will also roll into fund balance. And then that's exactly why we have that rainy day fund. So that is what has been drawn down, not the other section of fund balance.
Okay. But you've written in the expected revenues to be received relative to Irma. I mean, you have an anticipation of what that's going to be?
We do have an anticipation, but we have not recorded it in the books.
Right.
Because we record it when they are currently available and we know what the amounts are. And so we don't know that.
But in spite of this 9% to date, you still feel confident about balanced books at the end of the year?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. Looking at our expenditures, all departments are on target within their year-to-date budgets with the exception of our E-911 department. Their personnel costs are running ahead of budget. They are fully staffed and so we have always had vacancies out at the 911 center and they're fully staffed. They've gone through their overtime budget. They're having to have trainers sit with employees. And so that amount is expected to be just under $200,000. So this will likely come back before the board to request a budget amendment to pay for that. And of course, that comes about 75% from Glenn County and about 25% from the city of Brunswick. That's funded. These are the sections in our fund balance. Non-spendable, you'll see how much is committed, how much has been used for Irma. You'll see our unassigned but designated for specific purposes. Those are items that you've seen before you and you've said to use fund balance for. A lot of that is carryforwards. And then our unassigned, undesignated amount of $9.7 million. We have our total fund balance of $42.8 million. And then in our accommodations excise tax, this is our hotel motel tax fund where we have our, of course, half goes to the CBB and then we have Neptune Park, Lith Island, Selden Park are all paid for out of this fund. And then our 911 system, you see year-to-date actuals and expenditures. And then this amount is the amount for the loan that is paying back the general fund. Remember that we gave the 911 fund a loan from the general fund at the interest rate we were earning at the bank and that is why that amount is left over there, because that usually comes to zero because we bill out the city and the county every quarter. This is our fire fund, revenue to date, expenditures to date. Sea Island Police Fund, revenues and expenditures to date. I know that we have moved in half of the, half of this fund is funded by our insurance premium tax proceeds and then half of it is from the militerate that they have specific for this. So I know we've moved in 50% of the insurance proceeds and then, and then you see expenditures to date, which is 75% of the year. Capital Projects Fund, you see the revenues and expenditures there with $1.39 million. Solid Waste Collection Fund, these, that is the fee, it's on property taxes and so most of that money comes in when property taxes come in, in November, December. And so this is where the fund is sitting right now with just under $1 million in revenue over expenses. Administrative Services Fund, that's where our- Administrative Services Fund, um, that's where our administrative departments that serves all the other departments are housed. And you, uh, all of the other departments and funds pay for this fund. This is our health insurance claims to date. That's something we like to show you as we go. This is six point three percent under budget. That equates to about three hundred thousand dollars. And this is less our stop-loss reimbursements. And then we have our prescription drugs, which are fifteen point four percent over budget, which equates to just under three hundred fifty thousand dollars. So together, those are about fifty thousand dollars over budget. Any more questions?
Commissioners, anything? Commissioners, may I make a clarification on a statement that I made? Uh, the ninety percent that I said we have worked through ninety percent of the problems, billing represents only a small amount of that. We're still putting our, we're still installing our computers and our MDCs. So our total project is about ninety percent complete. Our billing project, uh, we meet with them next Tuesday and I believe we'll have that one hundred percent complete. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Um, Tanya.
Sure.
The, on the um, amount with Irma and um, the budget, I didn't completely understand that. The committed when you were doing it, the fund balance.
Okay.
Yeah, back, right there.
Okay, so we have our committed fund, fund balance amount and then the amount that we have spent on Hurricane Irma. So hopefully we'll get most of that eleven million dollars back.
And so, so is it thirty-one million dollars together or is that eleven million part of the twenty million?
So that is our uh, thirty million dollar rainy day fund, those two numbers together. Now, it is just a bit over that because we've used a bit more for Irma than we've actually requested to move down to uh, committed. But that will all come at the end of the year when we try to true up everything and we bring you our last budget amendment of the year.
So the twenty million is just part of the overall rainy day fund?
That is correct. And so we, we had this thirty million dollar rainy day fund. We've used that much of it with Irma. And then as we get it back, we're trying to replenish the committed fund balance. But we bring it back to you to actually have it moved back because that is the nature of that category of fund balance. It has to be by the board's direction.
Uh, Ta- Tanya.
Sir.
Have, have we recouped all of our losses from Matthew?
We uh, have not recouped all of our losses, but we are still expecting two checks. There were some items that um, the state wouldn't pay for. I think the Sea Island Bridge, they say is a um, state bridge. And, and it, oh yeah, sorry, that was Irma. Um, but we have some items that they won't pay for. Some of the supplies that we requested, they determined were not qualified. But uh, we are close. I don't have that right in front of me, but I can certainly get that to you.
How, how close are we? We're eleven, little over eleven million dollars that we still have outstanding on Irma?
Correct.
That the gate, the government, federal government and state owes us?
Correct.
That's correct. Have we, have we filed everything that is needed to be filed at this time?
We have. Our um, our part-time person that we hired to help us with only FEMA, that was also eligible for reimbursement from FEMA, uh, finished up yesterday. And so all those reports have been submitted and we are um, working through those submissions right now.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Horst?
Chairman and Commissioners, uh, just wanna speak to the uh, two issues in the general fund in terms of revenue. One is the uh, tax revenue and the other is ambulance fees. In terms of the ambulance fees, uh, I, I would, in one respect, call it the perfect storm. I mean, what could have gone wrong, went wrong. Uh, but the good news is, is that things are on track. Um, when we first started looking into this and, you know, trying to figure out um, why the revenues were, were so down, um, you know, I'm really sort of surprised that the billing company has done, done as well as they have with all the issues we've faced. But they are on track now. Uh, the collection of, of two point one million dollars, uh, if that projection holds is, uh, it is short of our budget, but uh, the ground that they had, had made up, uh, has been very significant. Uh, but i- if you look at those two numbers out of a seventy million dollar uh, budget, um, I'm not trying to make light of the fact that we're short, potentially short, uh, over a million dollars in, in the budget. But you have to look at the whole revenue picture. In Ms. Miller's comments, she mentioned TAB, T-tax, which was projected to be up by three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand dollars. So the bottom line is at the end of the day, we believe, and uh, we have paid close attention to the budget last several months, that June thirtieth, the county will finish in the black. And that's, and, and the county services will be delivered. And that's the most important message from tonight's presentation. Thank you.
Now, I would like to ask, uh, have you made any contingency plans in case for the, for these shortfalls? I mean, I understand the scope of the whole thing, but have you made a contingency plan as to where we will not spend money to, if, if, if we're short this revenue?
Yes, we have. We, we uh, put on a, um, for non-public safety positions, we placed a hire increase, um, two or three months ago, uh, on some positions. So we've had to, um, allow some positions to be hired, like a, a new purchasing agent. I mean, that's very critical, it's non-public safety. But we have put appropriate breaks in place and, um, you know, when we get to February, March of next year, and the year after, and the year after, you know, if we have to do the same thing, that's what we're gonna do because every year is different. Uh, next year it could be, you know, another issue, but we, we monitor the budget very closely and when we have to.
Folks, could we, Mr. Kilgore, you're loud. Maybe you need hearing aids. I, I mean, I probably couldn't hear you if I didn't have mine, but could y'all hold it down out there? You're sort of disrupting the works here and I would appreciate it and personally appreciate it. Thank you.
Then when we have to, you know, we'll put those uh, measures in place to hold back on the budget so we can fill, uh, finish in the black.
No, I, I, I totally understand the budget's fluid and this happens on a regular basis. I just wasn't looking for any of all winded emails telling me how we're not, you know, we're in a deficit spending issue because we might be short in the budget. That's, that's why I wanna make sure.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you. All right, any other questions, for staff? Okay, thank, thank you. Yes, ma'am. All right. Next item's consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve all items on consent agenda, general business and all items on consent agenda, finance committee. With the exception of any items any commissioner so wishes to pull for further discussion.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number six. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number six. That would be me, wouldn't it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number four.
Four. Okay. Any other items to be pulled? All right, we have a motion, uh, and a second to, for all those consent agenda items. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items with the exception of item number four, number six, signify by raising your right hand. That would be unanimous. Thank you very much. Approve the request from Professor David Patterson from the University of North Georgia to conduct an archaeological dig focusing on animal re- remains around the Brunswick-Altaa Canal area adjacent to the federal law enforcement training center, subject to certain conditions. Uh, Mr. Andrews.
Commissioners, uh, before you as a request, um, received, this is a follow-up to the professor, well, the um, Dr. Patterson's work. Work that he had done in the area previously where he had found some uh, dinosaur bones of that era, fossilized bones. He found another likely site. It's actually on the Fletzy property. He's working with the law enforcement training center to finalize their approval for him to go in there and do his archaeological research and, and digs on their property. In looking at it, he realized that the um, the soil vein might extend out of the, off the Fletzy property and into the area of the Brunswick-Altaa Canal that's owned by the county. Uh, this item requests that if it does continue that way, that we authorize him through, through y'all's approval to continue his uh, archaeological work in the county right of way. Given the stipulations that are required in our ordinance and um, in the motion.
Commissioner?
That's fine. I just wanted, I was curious about the project.
Yes, sir. Apparently due to our um, low country type soil and, and uh, overall land development, not recently, but the geomorphology type stuff, it's, it's not common to find fossils in this area. So he's pretty excited.
Do you know what kind of animal it is?
It's an old one.
I do not.
Okay. Any, any further questions, staff? All right, uh.
Our for motion that we approve this item.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the archaeological dig signify by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, uh, item number six, award a base year contract to Nichols and Colley and Associates LLC for annual audit services in the amount of fifty-three thousand dollars for the county with a four uh, uh, optional one-year extensions. Uh, Tamara, um, let me just take this one. I, I, I personally want to thank the staff, Tamara and Tanya and, and Shawna, uh, basically for putting up with me. Um, I injected myself not into the selection of the auditor, but into the process. And um, we don't have an audit committee. That vote was, was uh, very close, but was defeated. And uh, so um, guys, what I'm telling you is I'm, I'm, I'm more convinced than ever that we need an audit committee. Uh, I uh, it was uh, it was a learning process for me and, and I've apologized to the ladies several times for the questions that I asked the uh, the uh, folks that were bidding on the audit. And uh, my naive questions, but they were focused basically on fraud and fraud prevention. And uh, any three of the auditing firms that, that bid on this were, were excellent. They, uh, Tamara, well, they do half the audits of counties in Georgia, the three of them probably collectively do. Uh, y- you know, there's just not many government auditors uh, out there. Uh, they say there's no money in the process. But, but anyway, a- a- any of the three could, could handle this audit and, and do it effectively. But um, some of the things that, that I learned in reading the proposals and in interviewing, we interviewed each of the partners of the auditing firms. And uh, uh, I can assure you I had nothing to do with the selection. Um, in fact, they asked me what my preference was and I, I wouldn't tell them and it wasn't the one they chose and that's probably a good thing. But uh, anyway, uh, I just wanna thank you for your work and uh, that, that's all I wanna say. And I wanna put these other six guys on notice. I, I'm not giving up on this. I'm more convinced than ever that we need an audit committee after going through this process. And so uh, would somebody make a motion to approve this thing?
A motion to approve it. I'm sorry.
Nicholas Colley and Associates LLC, so they're discussing, but where are they out of?
They're out of Macon.
Macon?
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the uh, contract with the audit, uh, company.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That is unanimous. Thank you all for your, for putting up with me. All right, um, general business, item number twenty-six, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Is that where I am? Consider accepting proposed changes for purchasing ordinance pending the county attorney's approval. Tamara?
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, Tanya and I and John Katron have worked for several hours and days with Aaron and Will to um, come up with a revised purchasing ordinance. The main changes in this purchasing ordinance are to allow for an exemption for the purchase of information technology, um, products and software, um, to bypass our standard bidding procedures. Um, the purpose of doing this is to allow for us to obtain software and hardware for information technology that is compatible for the needs of the county. Um, a lot of times what happens with the purchasing process is we'll issue a bid and it'll go out there and you might have two or three companies bid on something which is not what we need. So then we've spent six or eight weeks going through this process and writing RFPs and it's not even the software that we need or the hardware that we need. So um, the, what we're proposing is to allow for an exemption that would be much like our professional services exemption. And it would come before the Board of Commissioners and you all would have the decision whether you wanna allow IT to purchase those items, um, without going through the standard bidding process or if you wanted to request them to go through the standing bidding process.
Question?
Um, one other thing that this change is, it's a minor housekeeping change. Um, in our purchasing ordinance, we say that we capitalize items one thousand dollars or more, but for many years we have only capitalized items five thousand or more and it's been in our audit for several years that um, we are capitalizing items at five thousand or more. So this is just a house cleaning to, to clean this up. And the one other language was we changed um, county administrator to county manager throughout the document.
Yeah, I'm uh, I understand that sometimes you have to go to a provider that has a product that is compatible with what you already have in place. I understand that. And so getting compared to bids, um, if, if somebody's product's not compatible with us, it's the whole idea of compared to bids is not working for you. I understand that. Um, if we approve this and say IT decided that they needed an item that they knew could only be furnished by vendor X, uh, would we just call them up or send them a PO and, you know, we want this? Or would we get a price? Would we call, would, would, would we solicit a price from that vendor? You know, get a quote from them before we just said, hey, I want this. How much does it cost now?
Yes, we would um, request a price from the vendor. Um, and then if the item was within the thresholds which, that would need to come before the commission, um, for approval, you all would be notified that this was bypassed in the regular purchasing, um, policies and procedures and that the IT exemption was used. And you would have the option to approve or deny that as well, um, before a PO was ever issued for items that, that require that, which I believe is twenty-five thousand or more.
Yeah, the uh, if you, if uh, some, some items that are compatible may have to come from uh, actual manufacturer, I guess. But if, 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 if the item that's compatible goes out to retailers and you got two or three retailers that can furnish that item, if we know exactly what we want, then what, you know, we would want to maybe go to those folks, maybe have an option in the purchasing that, 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 that we could identify at least three retailers that can furnish that item and we go to them and ask them to quote that particular item, you know, instead of going to one party, you know?
And I believe that, you know, based on our extensive conversations, that, you know, the IT department is definitely focused on providing the best solutions at the most, the best cost to the county. And I don't think that they're just going to, you know, pick and I, pick someone out of the blue to go call. I think they would be doing their research to make sure that we're, we're getting the best price.
Well, well, I just, the, the, the biggest problem I would see with something like this is that if a vendor knew we contacted them, but they're the only vendor we're gonna contact, or somehow they know that when we come to them. Uh, you know, they, they could, they could jack the price up and, and uh, knowing, you know, we can't go anywhere else. You know, we know what they have down there. We know why they're coming to us. We're the only ones got anything compatible. Uh, you know, we're selling this product to everybody else for this, but, you know, we can make an extra thirty percent or forty percent because they gotta come to us. And, and, and so if there's any way we can guard against that, and I don't know, I mean, I have no idea how to tell you to do that, but, but uh, that would be one of my concerns with a policy change. but, but, uh, that would be one of my concerns with a policy change.
If, if you're looking for a specific item and there's only one vendor in the country that provides it, you put it on an RFP, they're gonna, gonna be the only responsive and responsible bidder. I'm not quite sure. I like the idea of staff picking or deciding that, well, we've got, I don't understand why you need this. I just don't understand.
We have had vendors, uh, not participate in the RFP when it was a product that maybe we would want. And, uh, and, uh, they just, the, some vendors just don't do it because it's a very expensive process for them and, uh, and not do it. And, uh, but I, I think what we're trying to address here is the ability to make sure that the systems that we buy are compatible with, uh, the direction that we want to move. And, uh, and, uh, we have to make sure that the technology fits, you know? In other words, if we're moving to the cloud as we are, software as a service, then we want to make sure that that is the technology that is provided. And, and, uh, the bid actually might be less if you have servers on site, but then that doesn't always take into account all the costs. Uh, what we're dealing with is, is purchasing regulations that essentially are commodity driven. You know, I want a blue box. Well, that's, a lot of people make blue boxes. But, uh, but, uh, you know, and you can put that out to bid quite easily, but if you're looking for a certain feature, you know, certain, I guess, look and feel, uh, ability to access information, ability to tie that information in with your other, other systems, then, uh, it becomes much more difficult to specify that, much more difficult to, to do it. You can't say, I'm, I'm putting in a, you know, a fifteen-inch color. Uh, you, you've got to, uh, uh, do other things. The, the other part of the process is, there's, there's two other pieces of this process. One is that, uh, we write, uh, system objectives for all the projects that we do and we identify, you know, how can we best meet those objectives. And some of those objectives include interfaces to other systems. But, but we, we define that and we do that in writing and we do that, uh, I hate to say a hundred percent, but ninety-five percent of our projects, we do that internally in IT to make sure that we're, we stay on track, stay on focus and get what we need. And then, uh, we, from that, we would develop an RFP and, 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 you know, go out, go for that or go to bid. Some of, some of these items will be just for bid. Uh, and, and in doing that, we try to, uh, ensure that we are getting the system that the user department wants. IT doesn't use these systems. We just try to make them work. So, so, you know, we're trying to make sure we meet their needs. And, uh, so there, there's a process there. We do that and then we would come to you and we'd have to explain to you that, no, we, we, we've chosen this particular software because it, it fits. Uh, we, one, one of the examples we've got is coming up to you, I think, in the next agenda item. We've been five years getting that system. So, so, you know, through all that process and trying to go through the purchasing regulations and do it right, it's been, it's been difficult to do. And, uh, and so what we're trying to do is set it up so that we can buy the correct software, which would be vetted by you all. Y'all get to approve it. And we have to explain how we went through and chose that software and, and, uh, make sure that it would work, you know, work for the county. There, so...
Going along with Commissioner Stanball, if we, if we issue an RFP and we specifically say we want X, Y, and Z, then, I mean, is this, I, I know this next item, it's something that we've been trying to get accomplished for several years, but is it something that's a recurring problem that we have with IT that we can't get the RFPs fulfilled the way the county writes them?
Well, it is. And, and part of the problem is that our purchasing ordinance is, um, is in need of updating to the twentieth century perhaps, but certainly the twenty-first century. We, this was written largely for, uh, road projects or for projects like that. And so engineering and architect are items that require a super majority of the board to vote on. And this would be sort of the same where everything that comes before you, like you'll hear in the next item, um, will be, um, like you'll hear in the next item, will be justified and you'll know exactly why we're asking you to go out of the norm and require that super majority vote so we can keep moving forward and not put it out to bid and then put it out to bid again and then put it out to bid again, which is what's happened on the next item. But another prime example is our ERP software that we are trying to purchase. We needed something specific that we, um, went, we wrote all of these objectives. We met with department after department after department exhaustingly writing these objectives until we were satisfied, until John was satisfied, that we had written everything and that we've got everything that we need in a system. And then we had companies come in, we did all these demos, and then at the end of the day, we knew who we wanted and we knew who would meet our needs and would make the most effective, uh, partner with us in our systems and what we are doing. And so it has come up a lot and we continue to work with the county attorney's office. And when this one came up, we all decided, let's just try to bring our purchasing ordinances up to date so that at least we have this option. And of course, you always decide, but at least we can bring the option. And with something like EMD protocols, we can keep moving and we don't have to go out again for an entire RFP or a bidding process.
And this doesn't preclude, uh, this doesn't preclude an RFI or an RFP. I mean, you know, it might be the correct way to do it for a system, but it does give us an opportunity to, to, um, select a vendor perhaps that is using the current technology and provides the support and training that other vendors don't provide, even though their system, uh, quote unquote, provides the functionality that you need. There, there's, there's other issues at stake here. How does it communicate? What's the throughput? How's the accessibility on it? Uh, there's, and, and how are they gonna maintain it in the future and, and how fiscally responsible they are? And you can write all that in, but it's sometimes difficult to do.
So what I'm hearing, excuse me, what I'm hearing is in, when, whenever you all identify where we, a case where we need to go this route, you're still gonna come to us first? Or I say first, you might go out and get the price, you know, locate the item, get a price, whatever, then come to us and say, hey, this is, this is, we're, we're, we're going this route and we want your approval?
Correct. And, and, uh, we have experience in dealing with these vendors in terms of pricing and expectations of industry standards in terms of what they might provide. And so, you know, I think we, you know, could we get them down another thousand bucks? Maybe. But, you know, we, we, we have a pretty good, we have a pretty good idea of what it should cost us.
Yeah. That's all I want to ask and I'd like to make a motion to approve if I can, Mr. Chairman.
You can certainly do that.
And I'll, I'll second it.
Commissioners, real quick, just point of clarification. Currently it's not written as a super majority item, but we can certainly make it that way.
Sorry.
We can, uh, super majority is, requires five votes.
Five votes.
It's not written in the ordinance right now, but we certainly can add that to it if that's the will of the, um, of the commission. Or, or you can pass it tonight. We can, we can bring it back a later date if that's what y'all want to do. But either way...
Just, let's vote on this, bring it back for the super majority and we'll move on. All right, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Practical standpoint, I'm not sure what I'm gonna be looking at when he brings it to me, but anyway, um, all right. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number twenty-seven, moving right along. Consider the following. A, increasing the revenue and expenditures in the E nine-eleven fund in the amount of seventy-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. B, authorizing the use of capital projects fund balance in the amount of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars to fund the Glen County share. And C, approving the purchase of priority dispatch pro QA EMD professional services and software for the Glen Brunswick nine-eleven center from Spillman Technologies, Inc. Pending final approval of the contract by the county attorney in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars based on professional services that they will be providing to the nine-eleven center by upgrading the scripting protocols and providing initial and annual training with funding to be provided by the FY eighteen E nine-eleven fund. John, you want to tell us what all that means?
Uh, yes. Uh, this, uh, this is the system that is used by dispatch and, uh, and also can be used by medical personnel to, uh, determine the proper protocol in the event of an emergency. If someone's not breathing, you know, do you ask the right questions? Try to help somebody get through the crisis and, and, you know, save their life. And, uh, we, we have a system that i- is been in place for a long time, Steve.
Since the center's been in operation?
Yeah, for, you know, fifteen, twenty years. And, uh, it's no longer supported or updated. And so what we're trying to do is get the current protocols into the system. This system also ties into the Spillman system that we use and will automatically, uh, uh, come up and tell, uh, tell the dispatchers what to do and also provide some automatic dispatch functions with, uh, with the system so that we can get people to the site quicker. Uh, so, uh, it's got, got some good functionality, uh, there with that. And I'm, uh, not sure what else I need to answer if you'll help me out.
I'm not sure what else I need to ask. Um, the, um, any questions for Steve or John?
Make a motion to approve it as, as you so, uh, erudite, erudite, uh, read it. I, I could not have done that at the finance committee.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, I believe. All right, item number twenty-eight. Y'all want to talk about the Coast Guard beach thing anymore? Uh, how about number twenty-nine here? I was just kidding. Twenty-nine, consider adoption amendment to the liquor malt beverage and wine ordinance of Glen County pertaining to the regulation of breweries and brew pubs. Commissioner Browning.
Make it quick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're gonna wrap this up here pretty quick. Um, right. Uh, gentlemen, I got a call from another gentleman here in Glen County and he wants to open, um, a brew pub in my district. And, uh, he specifically has talked about the O'Shawne's Restaurant Building, which is out next to the Cracker Barrel Restaurant out at exit thirty-six and three forty-one, which I think is a great location. Uh, the brew pub would be a, a, an establishment that, where he can, um, actually brew malt beverages. And he, this, this change in the ordinance would allow for onsite consumption and it would allow for off-site consumption in limited quantities. And so he asked for my support in this and I, I told him, I said, well, what the heck, you know, we've been changing ordinances here lately to accommodate everybody with a new idea. So I said, I'll go for it. So, um, I, I, I do think it's a worthy endeavor. Um, you know, it's kind of where the markets are going. Um, I've heard from, um, quite a few folks that he's put the word out. They've contacted me and they're anxious to see this thing open up. I don't know if it's got anything to do with the ordinance change we're looking at here tonight, but he wants to also offer food in the establishment. So, uh, that goes along quite well with what I understand other brew pubs are doing. So I'm in support of it and, um, I'm gonna turn it over to the attorney and see if he has any, any more to elaborate on.
Commissioners, I think that's, uh, very well, uh, stated. It, it would be required to be a restaurant, so they have to sell at least fifty percent food. So it's a restaurant that also brews their own beer. Um, and there was also a change in the state law in twenty-seventeen. So, uh, it gets rid of, at least in this limited context, the three-tiered system of manufacturer, wholesaler, and then retailer. So it allows that, uh, brewer to, to sell it, um, manufacture it onsite, sell it onsite with the food, uh, and also to sell it, uh, to, to, for off-premise consumption in limited quantities. Uh, and if they so choose, they can also sell it to a wholesaler who can put it in, uh, in stores for retail. So it, it, it condenses that three-tiered process, um, for, for just brew pubs, um, and then for, for brewers as well. But this ordinance tonight is a brew pub ordinance. Um, and arguably we already allow brew pubs. There was one at the old Emlyn and Hesse, um, location years ago in the nineties, uh, which closed down. But, uh, this takes the extra step of allowing them to, um, sell for off-premise consumption and at wholesale or for wholesale, um, uh, sales. Are there any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Basically a combination growler factory slash restaurant slash brewery slash wholesale distributor. I mean, I...
Are they gonna do growls?
Uh, I don't know if, um...
I mean, you're on on and off premises.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just...
It, it certainly combines the, uh, the parts of all three. Um, you can, on-premise consumption, off-premise consumption, and you can sell it to wholesalers. Um, and again, that was a change in state law that makes tonight's, uh, ordinance, uh, possible to present to you. Um, but, um, yeah, it's, it's all three of those. I'm sorry?
Oh.
Uh, the, the, that location, uh, at some point in time, it's been, it was a number of things before it was torn down. Um, but it, it used to be a brew pub. Um, so you could eat, uh, dinner and you could also, uh, have a beer that was manufactured on site. So, uh, that's, that's evidently been already allowed in Glen County, the concept of brew pub. So what this does, it just clarifies that we do in fact have a definition for it, what it is, uh, how we regulate it. And, uh, then it adds additional, um, points of wholesale, uh, sales and retail sales for off-premise consumption.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the ordinance as written. Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Squire, please tell me.
No, sir, not tonight.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?